Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Ram Cassoun.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Oram is present.
For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward.
Good evening. Susan Depew, 57 Prospect Street, Middletown, also known as the litter lady. Thank you. Nice to see you, all of you. On April 23rd, we will again have the force of all of Middletown. We hope to have all of the families, students, and elected and unelected officials come. We will meet at the new beautiful square, the John Dignan Square, which was also called Festival Square. It will run from 9:00 a.m. till noon, and we will outfit every one of you with a gorgeous shirt that you can wear afterwards. Everyone will be able to see you. Nice. And I thank you all for being here, and I'm really glad to be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, everybody. Darren Cross from the Middletown Little League, and I just want to talk about the 2022 upcoming season. But before I talk about that, I want to talk about the last two years. I don't know if a lot of the city knows that we did have seasons, both in 2020 and 2021. When COVID happened, we shut the park down, and we were like everybody else. We were scared, nervous, didn't know what to do. Sent everybody home. At this point, we already ordered uniforms. We already had the season set up, ready to go. But when the governor started talking about allowing recreational sports in May, Debbie Allen Dogan, Sherry Soto, Rosanna, and myself sat down at Rosanna's table, got on our laptops, called the mayor, called Chris Brinkerhoff, called Nikki, and we filed for all the permits and protocols and safety plans, and we made the season happen. And it was different, taking temperatures of parents and taking temperatures of kids and dealing with quarantining and quarantining teams and quarantining coaches. But as a community, everybody came together. We had no pushback. And for that, you know, I want to say thank you to the, especially to the mayor and to Chris Brinkerhoff and Nikki and Ray Lynn. I was emailing and making phone calls, and we were navigating websites, and we're just volunteers of a baseball league. We didn't even know what the hell we were doing. We just were just Google this, Google that, and we had all the paperwork done. And we were successful in both seasons. And I want to talk a little bit about fundraising. You know, as a league, we don't get any outside money. We do fundraising. We have some sponsors. I believe we have 26 sponsors this year and 26 teams. But as far as outside funding, we don't get any outside funding. And with the fundraising that we do every year, we try to take that money and put it back to registration costs, to keep our registration costs down. I know a lot of our neighboring towns are over $200 as a registration fee. We are $75 for T-ballers, and we are 140 for our older kids. So that's something I'm very proud to say, that we can continue to take that fundraising money and put it back into the league as far as equipment and keeping the costs down. This year, we are approaching 300 kids. You know, I've been on the board almost nine years now, and the number has climbed every single year. And I think one of our proudest accomplishments for Rosanna and myself is we now have seven girls softball teams, which is amazing, because when we first, when I first got involved in the board, there was a lot of 10- to 12-year-old girls that were still playing baseball, and they had to transition to softball when they went to school ball. And they were behind, because it's a lot different hitting a baseball to a softball. And they were getting frustrated, because the pitch was so slow versus a baseball pitch. And now we don't have to worry about that, because they're starting at six, seven, eight years old with softballs. This year, at between Watts Park and Davich Park, we're going to have approximately 250 games played there throughout from April until October. And there again, the Parks Department to the rescue. I don't know how they do it with what they have to do, John Bianchi and his entire crew, between the amount of parks and reservoir trails, and they still find time to fit in Watts Park and Davich Park. They do an amazing job. I just want to talk a little bit about the transition between Brink to Ray Lynn and Nikki. Well-oiled machine, didn't skip a beat. Everything has been beautiful. As far as the permits and the communication, kudos. Great job. Thank you. I want to thank Coach Kate over there, Alderwoman Kate, Mom Kate, and whatever hat she has on today. You know, Kate has joined the coaching squad, and she is with us forever. I just told the coaches the other day, once you coach a T-ball team, you are stuck for life. So, and every time I talk to Kate about some of the things that are on a wish list for the park or for the league or for the town, Kate brings it back and talks about it to the people that can possibly make it happen or find funding to make it happen. So, thank you, Kate. We appreciate everything you do. And I just want to definitely say thank you to the board, the board members, the volunteers. This is the first year I've been involved in Little League where I have not had to guilt a parent into coaching. We have enough volunteers for each team, and we have assistant coaches for each team. So, it's been an amazing process watching the community come together. And our opening day is going to kick off April 2nd. That is going to be an 11:30 kickoff, 11:30 lineup. We will submit all the proper paperwork. We are going to do the same thing at Presidential Park, and we're going to go up to Watkins Avenue, down to the park, and we're going to do our opening day ceremonies. We're hoping Mother Nature sticks to its plan right now and stays 60 degrees, and we can have some games. The reason that we're opening April 2nd is because April 9th is spring break, and the following Sunday is Easter Sunday, so that would push us back until April 23rd. And we feel like if we don't have to lose a whole month, we're going to try to go for April 2nd. And just to touch base on our girls softball, the last two years, they've won banners for District 19. So, congratulations to them. And again, I just want to say thank you to the mayor, and thank you to the Parks Department, and thank you to each one of you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Remarks of the mayor.
Good evening. I know some of you have been getting the same emails, maybe all of you, regarding downtown parking. And I know some of the members, Kevin was not on the board at the time, but when we went through the plan. But I just want to update the council and the public on the process that we went through, because the emails that you're receiving are kind of insulting, that no thought went into this and to this process, and that we're sort of ignoring people. First, this began back in 2017, when we were doing the DRI. And we had the, if you recall, the study that was done by, I think it's BIF or BJF or...
BFJ.
BFJ. I know, some acronym like that, in which they addressed the, in their Development of Parking and Utilization and the Management Plan. So, the process began back then, and the public involvement began back then, with us speaking to individual business owners and property owners in the downtown area. And ultimately, it led to us developing a plan, but also putting together public hearings and having much community input, from property owners, as I said, to tenants, residential tenants, commercial tenants. And overall, we got a little late start on it for the winter and getting the signage up, as everyone else, the, you know, the COVID delayed things, but not getting signs. But first of all, we didn't, no one claimed that this is a plan that's cast in stone. It's flexible, but the one thing, from my perspective, that is not flexible is what's being requested by the gentleman that sent you all the email and some of the other people. Very few, by the way. I think we have six complaints, is that the fact that you buy an overnight parking pass for $10 a month does not give you the right to take up a parking lot, parking space in one of the key high-turnover lots 24 hours a day. Otherwise, we would have no parking, no business activity in our downtown. So, what the gentleman that's reading, that's reaching out to you folks is asking for, he's asking for, "I have a parking pass," him, "that I paid $10 a month for. I should be able to park my car in the lot," let's say it's a James Street Lot or on West Main Street, whatever, "for unlimited amounts of time, because I bought a pass." Well, number one, we didn't force him to buy a pass. The pass is optional in those lots for overnight parking. They actually can park from 8:00 at night to 11:00 in the morning without, and then have to move their car by 11:00. Otherwise, they're subject to the four-hour parking. So, they also have, maybe 150 to 200 feet away, the ability to park for multi-day, up to 72 hours, and in some lots, up to eight hours, for free, without getting a pass, so without spending the money. But the point is, is that we're trying to get through, and this is just standard. This is not City of Middletown creation. Any community you go to with a viable downtown is not going to allow merchants, tenants, landlords, employees to park in front of a business for unlimited amounts of time. Otherwise, we're back to, you know, 20 years ago, and businesses will be closing. So, that's the genesis of it. His comments were insulting and continue to be insulting. I responded to them again today. But the fact is that we are looking at making adjustments, but those adjustments do not include letting him, as I said to him, that, you know, this is public parking, not your private parking. Or that when people want to go to motor vehicle, need to go to motor vehicle, they want to be able to park and then go in, do their business, and leave. When people want to go to a restaurant, go to a restaurant, spend it two, three hours, and leave. Paramount Theater, all these activities that are going on down here, they need to have, they focus around accessibility of parking. On the reverse side, we're getting a lot of positive feedback from our business owners and from some customers who are calling us. One, a former employee here, who notified Maria and said, "Jeez, I'm coming more frequently now downtown for lunch, because I can find a parking spot much easier. I don't have to walk, you know. I have a lot of options where you're going to go for lunch. And if it means me having to walk, you know, 250, 300 feet versus pulling into a parking lot at another place, I'm going to go pull in the other place." So, but now he sees the opportunity is here, and so the, but the, the reason why I bring it up is because the emails continue. One of you, Alderman Johnson, I think was, mentioned that he's taking a lot of the air out of the, taking a lot of the air.
Yes.
And is not taking no for an answer, but I've offered to meet with him and go through the history of it. I guess he has finally responded that he would like to meet, and I'll give him the history, and I'll give him the fact that in 2017, this thing started. I'll give him the fact that we had public hearings and all the other goodies and our reasons for doing things. If he has some positive impact, our input, we certainly will entertain him. In regards to the fourth ward, we have an issue with Delford Rubber, as you know. I just wanted to update you, because we have some customers and some, not customers, some residents in your area, that we do have them in court. And I know that Alex is meeting, and our code department is also, it's been postponed a few times. So, the delay is not on our side, but we are meeting with the attorney within the next day or so onsite, so the attorney can see firsthand not only the building problems, but the mess, I think, is the biggest concerns of that neighborhood. So, we have had them in court for quite a while. I will forward you the report from Theron, our fire inspector, that I asked for today. And the, the dude back in court, he has an appointment with him on March 16th at the site. So, if one of you want to be there, it's 1:00, but that will be your call. On a positive note, we have to announce that we were selected as, we applied for a program called the New York State Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. So, that's people with low, who qualify on income basis. This is, will help pay the cost of drinking water and wastewater services. The program can assist households who have passed new bills for drinking and or sewer services. Eligibility and benefits are based on income and household size and amount owed for the services. Benefits is based on actual amount of the drinking water and wastewater arrears, up to a maximum of $5,000. So, for, you should share it on your social media. Kelly has put it, I believe, on our social media and our Facebook. It's a New York State program. They would apply to New York State for the funding. There's, they have to show identity, their residence, their relationship with the vendor, with the vendor is the city in this case, and proof of income, and they'll determine eligibility. The city does not make that determination. That would be the state agency. But for those who are behind underwater or sewer, water and sewer bills, and they qualify, it's a darn good program. And I know a lot of people are still hurting because of the COVID, and we'll do what we can. We were accepted as a vendor, so we are now in a position to accept, they are in a position to pay us on behalf of qualified applicants. I wanted to thank Darren in the Middletown Little League also for all you did during the, during the past two years and keeping kids busy as a kid, and your kind words up here. Little League is an important part of our city and city activity. I think Alderman Massey, were you on one of the first Little League teams in Middletown?
Since you mentioned that, I will mention one thing. My father, along with four other gentlemen, started the Little League back in 1954. It was initially at Hayes Field and then moved up to...
Well, I wasn't far off.
And I was on, I was on the third team.
Okay. Well, I wasn't far off. All right. All right. Back in 1954, right? That's good. ONW update. I think there's a resolution tonight with the Fusco Engineering and the firm out of Syracuse that we will be retaining. The project is on schedule. We will, I believe I submitted in my State of the City a proposed schedule, and hopefully Jacob will keep monitoring that, and we'll stay on top of it. If it works, then you can say, "Good job, Joe." If Jacob falls behind schedule, then you have to say, "Bad job, Jacob." So, power against tobacco. Ray Lynn sent out an email today to all department heads that there is signage available now about the no smoking, no marijuana, no vaping signage that we'll be putting up. All department heads will be directed to put in their orders. We'll be placing them in our city parks and in our areas that you passed, saying no smoking of any type. So, hopefully, when those signs come in, we'll get them up very quickly. And tonight, we also, at the last minute, we're calling for a public hearing on some zoning issues. In our code, we reference retail quite a bit, and, but under definitions, we don't have a definition for retail. So, we do have convenience store, but no definition of retail. So, we're going to clarify that. We're going to clarify where certain types of retail, like tobacco shops, seem to be the big upcoming thing now, where they can go in our zoning. We're also going to be looking to you for some additional changes in the law, if we're able to, that would allow the police to enforce the non-smoking in businesses also. Right now, it's a health department offense, so if you're in a, in a business and someone's smoking cigarettes, marijuana, whatever, the police are not able, at least as we understand it today, not able to do the enforcement part. So, we will be able to give an appearance ticket if we make it a local code issue. And it's, the impetus for this was our regional phone call for, with the mayors in the Hudson Valley, which, by the way, none of them opted out, but they are now experiencing already the problems with the marijuana legislation, with people just renting storefronts and having like little, I think one place they referred to as Free Joint Fridays, where the, they purchase marijuana up in, legally, up in Massachusetts, and every Friday, they have people come into their business. And I don't know what the business is, but they hang there and they smoke pot inside all day long. And so, it's almost like a hookah lounge, but the, so we need, we need some enforcement tools. So, this is why we're looking at it, as an enforcement tool, to prevent those types of things from happening and to, to guide tobacco shops and these types of proposed uses. We anticipate problems from giving our police and our local prosecutor, Alex Smith, the ability to enforce it. So, you know, again, that's something that continues to move along. And as we identify problems, we'll try to come back with legislation that will help mitigate some of the issues that, that we see. And I think that's it. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Question for the mayor, Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. We did, at our constituents' meeting, we had a question on the Psych Center.
Yes.
And how that's moving along. We did hear complaints about a lot of graffiti on the buildings and things like that and garbage dumping, and I know it's dark back there, so.
And I'll give you a good answer. You're going to be happy with the answer. As you know, the contract for the purchase of the Psych Center, the 34 acres plus the multiple buildings, came, was drafted four and a half years ago. So, it's been at the Dormitory Authority with the attorneys in Albany for four and a half years. We had to do subdivisions, so not all of that was contract review. That was meeting their demands for subdividing certain properties. But a long time now, it's been at least a couple of years that the contract's actually been out. I met with Senator Skufus, who will be representing Middletown, hopefully, starting in January. And he asked me to forward him the emails, the email chains dating back that time. He had a meeting scheduled for the, with the Dormitory Authority that Thursday, or Friday, at 3:00. And miraculously, the morning before, the morning of the meeting, the contracts came in. So, the contract is here. Alex is meeting, is working with the engineer to develop the meets and bounds on the properties, and they should go back to them, hopefully, within a week or so, and we will then close on the deal. So, I want to thank Senator Skufus for his work on that. It was immediate. It was before the meeting with the Dormitory Authority, so he's been very effective for us.
Excellent. And one other question they asked on the Heritage Trail, where that stands, the park through Middletown to East Main Street. The bridges, I think they need railings on them or something.
They were putting railings on the bridges. Jacob can probably give you a better update on that.
Okay.
But I can tell you, from East Main through, the final design is not done yet.
Right.
And they're looking at alternatives. Mr. Sorenson, County Planner, has come up with two options, or like a dual, coming out of the transportation center, coming two different ways, all very favorable stuff to us, but we would like to move it quicker. Mr. Brooks from the Parks and Rec is on board. The county exec was working on it with me up until his deployment.
Yeah.
So, I'm anticipating we'll be dealing with email now, and I probably won't get an update until he's back, back in the country in two months, I think he said. What's that? I submitted a schedule in my, but I don't know at what point the, where we're going to go. But it's in my State of the City.
City, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Remarks of department heads, economic development.
Good evening, everyone. Today, we had an IDA meeting. It's all about preparing and submitting the audits and reports to the state, just like we did with the Community Development Agency a couple of weeks ago. So, now we're, we're ready to submit everything to the state. And our audit also for IDA came out with no findings, so we're pretty happy about that. Also, our annual performance report for community development that gets submitted to HUD right now is under review. It's on our website, and we have a public hearing for that next week. Also, we're working with the Bid District Run for Downtown organization. And all, all the good things are coming back, the summer concert series, the farmer's market, Run for Downtown. Also, with the market this year, we'll be doing some special programming with Parks and Rec to help drive up some foot traffic and also some activities during the market. Next week, we have another ribbon cutting. A coffee shop on Monhegan Avenue is going to be. We're going to be doing a ribbon cutting, so I'll be sending all that out and watch our Facebook, the Paramount. This Friday, we're doing Oscar Shorts, their special releases, the Oscar live-action films. And these are the nominated short films for the Oscars. So, Eileen, I know she's behind the door, good job on securing that. And also, all our concerts and everything are moving forward there. That's all I have for this evening.
Question for Maria.
Thank you. Thank you.
DPW Commissioner.
Good evening, all. Alderman Massey, the reservoir level 99.4%. They're almost full to capacity, which is good for us. The ONW, the mayor spoke to you about it before you. There is a resolution tonight. You've already authorized the hiring of Fusco Engineering and their subcontractor CNS. So, tonight will be just the amount of funding for his contract that was negotiated between the city and Fusco, and it is consistent with the standard, the industry standards, including the state of New York, OGS. So, if you have any questions later on about the resolution, I'll be happy to address them. The water line project, we're working with the contractor. That's the water line coming from the water treatment plant down Monhegan Avenue, 211 the State Road to Monhegan Avenue into the psychiatric, former psychiatric center site. We are working out some, some issues with the contractor. We're hoping that he will be back. They will be back within a couple of weeks. After that, it will take about five weeks to finish the project, to install the remaining pipe, about 1,500 linear feet of 24-inch pipe, and making the connections and the services to the houses on Monhegan Avenue. From 211, from Pilgrim's Estate entrance back to the water treatment plant, we're still having some issue with the water line, which we are working to resolve with the contractor and the manufacturer. So, that will not be resolved soon, but we're working on it. Traffic operation, it's moving, it's moving at the appropriate speed right now. The phasing plan for the traffic operation throughout the 28 intersections in the City of Middletown, signalized intersection, has been set. We're waiting for the contractor to issue an exact milestone and dates for each stage. Once that is done, then we will put that on our website, so all the businesses are aware of it. The mayor, he wanted to do some mailers too as well, but as we know, it's a construction. It's work in progress, so work will change. Whatever we send out, it might change. However, we will keep our website up to date with the progress of the contractor, which intersection is going to be done, which one is going to be done afterwards, and so on and so forth. So, all the phasing will be done once it's, once it's all agreed to and finalized. We will put that on our website, plus the mailers that the mayor wants to do for specific areas. Now, the mayor mentioned also in the DPW committee about cars parked on the grass. And we did, we did have an effort in there to send our code enforcement officers 5:00 in the morning. And we started last week with that. And we've covered about, just about two-thirds of the city. And we issued about 54 violations. So, you know, people, you know, when you see it, you think it's really a problem that is spreading throughout the city, parking on the grass, and, which it is. But out of the two-thirds of the city, we only issued about 54 citations. So, the problem, you know, because it's, it's an eyesore, people will think that it is widespread, and it's really a big, big deal, and it is a big deal. We're not minimizing it. We're not minimizing it. So we sent a letter of violation. We're requesting that the homeowners or businesses that received it to get in touch with us or the mayor. Some people, they started calling the mayor already. And tell us what your plans are to address the situation, whether it is widening your, your driveway, whether it is, you need more time, you know. We need to know what the resolution is, how you're gonna be able to deal with it. And the answer is not, you know, April fifteenth or whatever the date is, we're gonna be able to park in the street, and then it's not gonna be an issue, because the winter is gonna come back again, and then you will not be able to park on the street. So we would like you to have some kind of permanent resolution. But tell us about it. And if you need time, like the mayor stated, we can, if it's reasonable, we can put the letter of violation on hold until such a date that you say, you give us thirty days, sixty days, whatever, whatever number that is reasonable, number of days, then we can put it against the violation. And if that does not work out in a timely manner, then it will have to move over to the court, unfortunately. But this is gonna have to be, you know, we're gonna have to be addressing that. Another thing code enforcement is doing is numbering on the houses and the buildings. That has not been pursued lately, but you will start getting letters about each and every property in Middletown, much ha, must-have letter in there to identify, numbering, to identify the number of that house or the building. So that's for, for, for multiple, multiple reasons, some of which is nine-one-one, and there, the ambulance, the fire, you know, the police, DPW, when we go and respond to anything. It will be very helpful to know, okay, that's the number in there. And there is a specific size that will be issued in the letter to tell you what size the numbering will have to be on your, on your house or on your property. Another, another thing I want to get people's attention to, which is the council president, he's gonna start jumping up and down very soon in the spring, where the grass starts growing fast all at once. That's the growing season throughout the city, it happens. So, we would like you, please, to be vigilant about it, to try to take care of your own yard, your own grass, cut it, keep it up to the six inch in there as much as you can. We know at the beginning of the season, the growing season, everything is gonna grow, grow very fast, and you can't, you can't, you can't even catch up with it. But we urge you to do catch up with it, because otherwise, you will get letters of warning, and then violation, and then, and then penalties, and we don't want to do that. So with that being said, I will conclude my remarks. Any questions for me?
Question for Jacob. Jacob, can we start yard waste pickup earlier?
We have it already. I'm sorry, I apologize, I don't have the date. We have it set already.
Okay.
What is it?
Isn't it usually the first month?
Yeah, we, we have it, and we should have the, we may have had, we'll have the ad in the paper. What date do you have in mind?
I see a lot of tree branches from the storms. And they're all over. Silver Estates, Vincent Drive, everybody has them. Or, I, I have neighbors with garbage cans, they're full of tree branches.
Well, yeah, I mean, we can if you want us to. You tell us what date you want us to start. I mean, we're gonna have the spring cleanup coming up soon. Right now, we're doing, we're focusing on potholes as well in there. So we can, if you guys feel it's appropriate to start earlier, we will. Just give us what date you would like us to start. I'm sorry, I don't remember the date. I know, I just went over the ad, and it should be in the paper very soon, but I just don't remember it. I should have brought it with me.
Al McLeaner?
One other thing I forgot, at our constituents' meeting, again, people were asking about the automatic armed trucks. Are, are they working well, or we're using them? Because they, they see the old trucks out a lot, so.
Yeah, they're absolutely.
I said I would ask about it.
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you. Yes, absolutely. They're working tremendously in there. We have sent, the mayor spoke about them in the state of the city. I issued pictures in there in my report and DPW report in there, showing you just advantage. If you look at our report, DPW report, I, I drew a contrast between the old way of picking it up, picking up the garbage with the new way. The new way meaning the armed truck is going down the road in there, picking it up, nobody's around it. The other old way in there, you got people in there bending down, picking up garbage, upright bags from all over the place, putting them in the back of the truck. Just look at my report, it should be on our website as well. It will really show the contrast. But they are extremely successful. You see the back loaders in there going. It's especially happening on Friday for the recyclables.
Right.
Or if we have an armed truck down. And the reason, the reason is, after we distributed the recycling carts in there, I mean, citywide, everybody, every household almost is recycling every week. So before, we used to do a couple of runs in there, pick up, you know, just look down the road, there's hardly anybody there, putting out recyclables, the truck will keep going. Now we have almost every household is recycling, which is tremendous, and it's great. But it's taking more time. So now, instead of finishing the routes with three trucks, in eight hours, we're finishing the city now, citywide. Takes us around twelve hours sometimes with overtime, with the five trucks running. So not only the three trucks with the arms, five, the other two trucks, the rear loaders, in there running as well. So.
Good, okay. That, that's basically what I had said was, you know, the recycling, with everyone recycling now, and that's all done in one day.
Yeah, exactly. It's all Friday.
You did by awards.
Yeah, it's all Friday, and now, you know, it's citywide now. Everybody is doing it, and, and, and you can see it. We put the numbers in our DPW. Again, the residents, they go on our website and look at DPW report. In there, we show exactly how much our tonnage jumped from six hundred to average seven hundred to, I think, fifteen hundred tons, the pickup. So it's, it's, it's a huge amount, but check my numbers when you go to our report. I, I'm just talking from memory.
Okay.
But it's extremely successful. We're very happy with it. What's remaining right now is the bid area, which we are working to finalize with the mayor. We're working to finalize this. And then everything will be with the mechanical arm and to be supplemented with the rear loaders.
All right. Thank you. Al McLeaner?
Speaking of recycling, how, how well are people following the rules? Like, I saw something on TV, they call it dream cycling. A lot of people throw, throw stuff in the bins they think might be recyclable, but they aren't, like pizza boxes and, and plastic film sometimes, that isn't recyclable. Is that really a problem? Because I know it makes the whole batch dirty, right, or just?
Yeah, it's, okay, well, it's not, it's not a problem right now for us in there, because what happens is, we take it over to the county, and we dispose of it. And unfortunately, it costs us more to get rid of recyclables than it costs us to get rid of the municipal household waste, which is trucked over to Pennsylvania. This one, we take it to the county in there, and they are charging, because the market condition, I don't know when the market condition is gonna change. To answer your question, we have the pamphlet in there, it's on our website, and it's, it specifies exactly what you can put in, what you don't have to put in, and it's, it's all right there. But please try to stick to it, what you can put in recyclable.
But do you feel like, are people following the list, or that's my question?
Well, yeah, as far as we know.
Okay.
We never, we, we don't really investigate it right now, because I said, we just take it to the county, and the county's taking it. They never brought it to our attention that, hey, there's a lot of stuff is not there. But we urge residents to follow the brochure that we have on our website.
You got the camera in your car, when they're dumping the recycling truck, the driver is looking for, all of the things.
Yeah, yeah. The mayor is saying we have an option to inspect what kind of?
Trying to find what they're doing.
Yeah, but we're not inspecting if it's recycling.
No, no, no. My break up.
There is a camera in the cab of the truck, so when the recycling is dumped, if they see household garbage, the driver will do a report on that. Has the ability to do that. I know I've spoken to a few of them, and, and that's something that we should be enforcing even more, because if someone's using their, their recyclable bin for garbage, we don't want them, you know, just because there's no market for it, we don't want that to become a habit. So the drivers should be making a report if someone is doing that. Now, pizza boxes is one thing, you know, you can misunderstand, it's cardboard, and, and, and that's one thing. But if people are actually putting household garbage, bags of garbage in, and the driver sees it, they might not know it, that, that the driver, as it's being tipped in, is watching on a screen what's going into that, what's going into that hopper. So, we, if, if it does happen, they should at least be, if it becomes a, you know, a routine for that house, then the driver should be making us aware of it, and we should be violating them.
Okay. Police chief?
Good evening. I actually have nothing this evening, unless you have something for me.
Any question for the police chief? Al McLeaner?
I asked this question at our constituents' meeting too. Officer Vermon told us, but I asked how many applications were taken out for the police exam. I know the last day for applying to get applications, do we know how many were?
And I wonder why you wouldn't ask me that?
Issues?
Since I, I'm the one that takes in the applications. Four-hundred-and-fifty-four.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any question for the police chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, everyone. Like to, a big thank you to Kevin Witt and Recreation Commission for getting going the transportation issue that we were having, getting the kids in Middletown, the youth, the teens, to our facility on our teen open gym nights. Like, happy to report that there will, tomorrow will be the first night that we're starting that. Dan Higby on Mid-City Transit was amazing with setting up a schedule to have four centralized pickup locations in Middletown, to get them to our facility, to play basketball for three hours, and then back home to those four allocated spots. We have a lot of spring activities on our Bass registration site, that's up. Some special events, thank you to Leilani Lockett from Power Against Tobacco. April first is Chalk the Walk, and it's to expose the tobacco industry and their advertising that's blatantly in kids' eyes. So we're having an event at our facility to chalk all over our parking lot, and just different ways to use their hashtag that they have to prevent and expose the tobacco industries. We also have our Easter egg hunt is back this year. It's gonna be a little different. It's gonna be actually held at our facility. We had three different age groups, ranging from toddlers and infants all the way up to age twelve. We are requiring everyone to pre-register on our Bass site, just so we can have the proper amount of eggs and make sure we have enough parking and space for everyone in attendance that day. Spring break, when the kids have no school, we are running our spring break camp for that week. It's April eleventh to fifteen, grades K through eighth, from eight AM to four-thirty PM. We do have that registration also up on our website. And we are happy to report our lifeguarding class that we are offering, we offered and put out for free for anyone, anyone from a high school kid up to an adult who would be interested in becoming a certified lifeguard. Ideally, we do want to have both pools open this summer, and we want to have them fully staffed to keep them safe. So we have ten kids enrolled in the class. We were supposed to start last weekend, but with the weather, it got postponed. So we will have our first class this Saturday at Middletown High School. We're definitely looking forward to getting these kids trained. They are all teenage kids. And also, we are looking for very strong managers and assistant managers, adults ideally for our pools for the summer. So if anyone knows anyone interested in the aquatic field, looking for a summer job, we are hiring for that position. And last but not least, a special thank you to the school district. They've been amazing with the permits, getting into their building, especially the lifeguarding class. We asked, and by the end of the day, they had dates for us to use their facility. And also for our summer sports camp last summer, it did work out in the park, but it's not ideal, especially when you have a hundred kids and thunderstorms rolling in, and you have three different camps going on in damage. Trying to find them shelter was, got a little hectic, but we managed. So ideally, we do love to have sports camp in the high school, and they've been amazing. We've been approved for Monhegan Middle School for our sports camp. So once the permits are back and approved by everyone in the school district that has to approve them, we will have registration out for summer, for our summer camps. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you. City clerk?
Good evening, everybody. The city clerk's office, you might recall, a few meetings ago, you guys approved a resolution authorizing us to start issuing hunting and fishing and trapping licenses on behalf of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. We got the equipment into the office this week, and it's installed, and stay tuned to the website. Hopefully, by the beginning of next week, we'll be able to start issuing those to the city residents.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Remarks of all the men. Alvin Tobin?
Just coming on the lovely weather today. It was nice seeing people out in the parks, using the swings, going down the slides. Hope it sticks around. Thank you.
Alman John Fesswa?
Yes, good evening. The Public Works Committee met this evening. We approved of the Z-dash-three consulted to be added to our list, authorize the city of Middletown electrical underwriter. Our next meeting, a resolution will follow. And also, I'd like to mention, I know the snow's been a little hectic, but our street crew has been doing a wonderful job. So kudo to them. Thank you.
Alman Johnson?
Thank you very much. With respect to Senator Skoufis, I was able to attend that meeting when he was here in Middletown. And I share the mayor's enthusiasm. I think he's gonna be a really strong advocate for our city, and hopefully, we'll be able to turn the favor in whatever manifestation that means to anybody listening to that statement. I did attend the Paramount, I'll call it the main voyage for 2022. So bagpipes. I tend to think about Amazing Grace and the St. Patrick's Day Parade. But, you can actually have a rock band, and you can feature bagpipes as the major performers. It was amazing. I mostly went to look at the venue, not necessarily the performance, but they were amazing. The venue, the front door, the lighting, the sound, listening to people exiting the theater, it, it does not really get any better. So, thank you to any and all that have spent the last two years making the Paramount what it is today. And kudos to bagpipes. With respect to parking, I think we, as a council, in collaboration with the administration, exhibited due diligence in the plan. We had a town meeting, we went over every single parking lot in the entire city, and what it might be when it grew up. I guess it's human nature that sometimes, when you want an outcome, you will continue to re-stay your position until somebody gives you the outcome that you desire. That doesn't always work out, but I certainly appreciate the mayor's perseverance in continuing to explain to this particular resident that his particular expectation really can't be met, but that we do feel he has viable alternatives to have a good quality of life. So thank you, mayor, on behalf of the rest of us. Thanks.
Alvin Rikers who?
Good evening. I won't repeat anybody else, but as for Little League, thank you for coming tonight. I'm actually excited about our season getting rolling a little sooner. The growth of softball has been really cool. As a mom of three girls, they're all really excited about it. And it's just such a great program, and I know that our shack is brand-new this year, which is great, because I eat there literally every night between April and June, so it's fantastic for us. But it just, you've been a good partner of the community, and it's definitely grown ever since we've been involved. And it's, it's always fun to be down at the fields, and I'm always excited about this time of year, so I'm looking forward to that. And just, by extension, all of our programming here and the activities we provide for kids and families, it's, you can't beat it. You can look far and wide, but I will take the Pepsi challenge any day. That's all I have.
Al McLeaner?
Thank you. Been hearing all day long, beware the Ides of March, and a lot of jokes about it. So far, it's going okay. Thank you, Sue, for coming by. Citywide pride cleanup, this flyer should be out all over the place. But the main thing is, April twenty-third, save the date, and we'll see if we can really get that back going again with, with the bang, and outdo our record of last time, two years ago. On the way in to the common council chambers on the second floor of City Hall, one of our historical society members, Jack McMahon, has finally, we finally have that glass case filled, so if you're in City Hall, take a look. It's got a lot of the books and the literature and past-year books and things we have at the historical society that are available for people. March, April eleventh will be our next constituents' meeting, and I mention it tonight because the mayor has gracefully agreed to attend that meeting, and he can hear all of it in person that we usually hear every month. So, and we do get some good suggestions. I, I think, I'll wait till we get to the Ruthy Dino resolution to explain about that. Mr. Massey, thank you for your report. If we had a report of department heads from civil- Mr. Massey, thank you for your report. If we had a report of department heads from civil service, I would have thought to ask you then, but I, I went through the chief, so. But I'm, I'm happy to hear two hundred forty-five, and I hope they, people follow, they follow through on their applications. We've had about, since our last meeting, another fifteen thousand COVID deaths in this country. And I think New York has had another three hundred. So it's, it's a lot less. But if New York had three hundred deaths from any other cause in, in two weeks, we'd be pretty concerned about it. So we hope that keeps going down, and we can get back to doing what we like to do. And I keep in mind Ukraine and what is going on there. I can't not mention it because it is so horrendous, and the human rights abuses are so horrendous. And we really haven't seen anything like it since Germany decided that Czechoslovakia and Poland were free for the taking. And that's, we have people in this country who are cheerleaders for Mr. Putin, and that's pretty sad. That's it. Thank you.
Alderman Green.
Thank you very much. It is always great to hear about Little League, and thank you for all you do. I thought that might be the only baseball we saw for a little while this year, but things did turn around there, so. But I did enjoy my, I did do one season growing up in Little League, and the best position I played was in the dugout, so. I'll leave it to the better players. Certainly, they put on a good show, and the kids always have fun. So it was, it was great, though. I do have fond memories and good friends there. I did wanna bring up, while we're in the volunteering spirit, on April twenty-third, cleaning up downtown, the, it is the Recruit NY Weekend for the fire departments across New York State. So there will be an open house on April twenty-third at Central Firehouse on East Main from ten AM to two PM. And just a quick note, I did learn recently that seventy-five percent of the state of New York's firefighters are volunteer, and it does save taxpayers in the state overall an average of two point nine billion dollars a year. So, you know, definitely something to, to think about while you're cleaning up the city. Stop down, see what goes on around the firehouse. And it's always fun to, to see the big trucks. I know my son will enjoy it. Other than that, thank you to everyone who came out for our constituents' meeting last night. It always is a, a good conversation. We went about two hours last night, so definitely kept talking for a while and, and had a good list to, to bring to the table. And happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone. Enjoy, safe, and be merry, wear green. Thanks.
Alderman Witt.
Thank you very much. Ray Lynn, thanks to you regarding that transportation, also with the rec center and, and all the work your staff did to put that together. And also, I'd like to just acknowledge the Recreation Commission that really jumped on this and enthusiastically, and there was some good discussion. Sean Astrendfeld, Wayne Hawkins, no, he's not back there tonight. Anthony Williams, Dan Higby, Lynette Williams, and, and also Alderman Kleiner was involved in this as well. So I'm excited to see how this all plays out. So thank you for getting this going. Regarding the Citywide Cleanup, Susan, nice to see you again. Thank you for coming out. And Jerry, for your work also, too, getting this rolling. I can just say, on, from my day job, working with the school district, we already have committed the NJROTC and all six honor societies. So that can be easily a hundred plus there alone. That's not even counting sports. So I think we're off to a really good start on that. So whatever your record is, I think, I think we have a shot this year, because I know so many of the kids are just looking to do community service, whether they're involved in the honor societies or not. A lot of different groups that we have here are always looking to try to help. So I hope we, I hope we get a really good crowd there. And our ward meeting, our first ward meeting, we tried to get it rolling, but the weather was bad on March ninth, so we had to make the call there, and we postponed it. So we are gonna try again on April thirteenth at six o'clock here. So if, we'd love to see you if you are interested in coming out and speaking with Mr. Massey and myself. So thank you very much.
Alderman Massey.
Darren, thanks for coming tonight. I'm hoping that I can make the parade. I'm giving a test that day, and hopefully, I'll be able to, I always have. I did wanna, because I did mention my father's name, George Massey, and I said that there were five people out of respect for the other four, I do wanna mention their names, who actually started the Little League. And it was Dr. Costco, Dr. Emholtz, Father Forster, and Ike Helper. Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast, obviously, was postponed last Saturday. I wanna thank Maria for taking care of the sign, and I'm hoping that, once we get another date, we'll be able to get a sign up again. And I appreciate those people that were interested in it, and I'm hoping that when we have the second, when we have the rate, schedule for it, people will be able to come. There's a motion tonight, a resolution, a second resolution on the salary schedule, which I obviously have to abstain, because my name appears on the list of fifteen or sixteen. John Dino served on this council, sat where Miguel does. Charlie Dino was a respected police department lieutenant who retired. Both have passed on. They're both are pretty good friends of mine. Ruthie Dino, the daughter. We've had the run twenty-five consecutive years. Now, normally, I would give preference to the alderman and the ward, of which this takes place. And I understand Mr. Kleiner would like to table this motion for reasons that he mentioned that, to me at least, I don't know if he mentioned anyone else, that he and Alderman Green have some questions. They've had all year. I would like to know, let's say, they don't get the answers that they want, would they even consider not closing down the streets? Would you consider not having a fundraiser for Ruthie Dino Marshall? You've had all this time. The police are involved in this. It's a planning issue. If you want, you talk to the chief of police. He's right there. I don't know why we would put this off, but if you wanna put it off, put it off. But I, that kinda bothers me, because I get the idea that if they don't like what they hear, that they would even consider not going along with this. It, it absolutely just doesn't make any sense. It's a great fundraiser. It's been for twenty-five years. And those, that family is a very well-respected family. The YMCA can use the money. I guess I'm just a little, I don't understand it. Oh, and by the way, Jerry, you asked the chief prior to whether I was gonna give a report or not. So don't give your wise cracks.
Do business.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, authorizing a budget transfer for seven thousand forty-four dollars and eighty-two cents from ARPA funds to cover related, COVID-related expenses.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, authorizing the salary schedule for non-union employees for 2022.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Abstain.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, authorizing an agreement with Orange County, Orange County for the Stop DWI Enforcement Program.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion?
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, authorizing an agreement with Pitney Bowes for a mailing machine.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Jean Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, authorizing an agreement with Fusco Engineering.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion?
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon, authorizing an agreement to retain legal counsel for a bankruptcy proceeding.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, authorizing a contract of sale to purchase property at fifty-four Kohler Road and Highway twenty-four.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Motion carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, amending the city code, updating the penalty provisions of Article One of Chapter four sixteen.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, authorizing road closures for the YMCA annual Ruthie Dino Marshall Run.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. I, I would like to move that we postpone this resolution till the next meeting. I don't wanna table it. I wanna postpone it to a date definite, which would be the next meeting. Reason for that is, we, we, last year, the route was altered to try and limit the amount of time people would be closed in, in the second ward, and there was discussion about that, and discussion with the police chief, and, and they were very accommodating, and it went very well. This year, because it's the twenty-fifth anniversary, they wanna go back to the original map, and since the original map is part of the letter, and the original route is part of the letter, so it's part of this resolution. And I would like Alderman Green and I simply to have a chance to sit down and talk to them about the route, and we may end up with the same route, and we could end up with exactly the same thing, and the police telling us exactly how they're gonna move along to expedite it. I know Sergeant Welch has been excellent. They've been very good about how they do it, but last year, it was helpful. I mean, part of it was the pandemic problem. And they were gonna stagger it, but they didn't stagger it. So we just liked the chance to sit down and, and speak with them. They're certainly gonna have their race, but before we memorialize this particular route, and they asked for it at seven AM, or resolution says eight AM, there, there are just some things we'd like to be able to work out with them. So that's, that's my motion, is a motion to postpone till, and I guess it would be, it's, it's the first Tuesday in March.
So you have a motion by Alderman Kleiner to postpone this resolution till next meeting. Do we have a second?
One second.
Alderman Green. Any discussion? Alderman Witt.
I just have a question. So.
Yes.
Like, there was a problem when we did this years ago, but I thought it was tightened up. I mean, this was back when we had the Classic right before that, and I remember one year, it might have been two, that the Elks Club tried to start a race also, too. So doesn't the city, isn't it, like, everything is, it's, there used to be these wide ranges of area that it was open, so if you lived up by you, or like I was, or wherever, that it was, it was open for longer periods of time. And then I thought, didn't the police, like, follow literally through and open up the streets as soon as, like, the last person come by? I mean, what is, is that a problem now, or is that?
It's, it's, it's gone back to the original route, and that's certainly part of the discussion. We just simply like to have. We just like to be able to speak with them about it. It is, it does close down the second ward for a Sunday, on a Sunday morning, and, you know, people can't leave. And that's, that's a sacrifice people have made, but we have had people talk to us about it and ask us about adjusting it, and, and whether there are any provisions can be made to open the route as quickly as possible. So we're listening to some of our constituents with concerns, and I'm simply asking, since this wasn't put on the, I didn't see this motion till it was put on the agenda Friday, and we didn't know. I mean, they're not gonna have an Orange Classic this year. I didn't know that either. So we're, we're learning as we go along. A lot of the Orange Classic has folk, has shifted to supporting the run for downtown, and we'd like to keep the Ruthie Dino run going, but the route is an issue, and, and it's a question, and I'd just like for the next meeting to have time to discuss it with them, and for them to show us what their plan is. And, and talk, with the chief has said he would be willing to facilitate a meeting with us.
Alderman Massey.
Well, we have the chief of police here. I don't know if you wanna ask him anything. I guess my other question is, let's say they don't change it, and you don't like what you hear, would you even consider not voting to have the Ruthie Dino Marshall?
That's not really a question for right now.
Of course, it's a question. That's what this whole thing is about, whether to have it or not have it.
It's about putting it off for three weeks, or two weeks, or, well, three weeks, I guess, because of the extra week in March, but it's putting it off till the next meeting, because we haven't had time to really look at the change in the route, going back to the original route, and to discuss it with them. The chief said he'd be willing to facilitate a meeting with us and the race organizers. So I knew the Dinos myself for many years. I grew up in Middletown, as you know. I've been here a year longer than you have.
Alderman Cassoon.
I, I understand those, like, your concerns that you've brought up, but this is something that's been going on for a very long time. And as a third ward, Alderman, we have the run for downtown, which shuts down half the third ward every, you know, whatever Saturday that is in August, and we get through it. It's a great thing for the city when we do it, so we get through the few hours. The police are very good about making sure that there are ways around the route, and they close, they open everything back up as it ends. But I feel like if this is, I mean, I did the Ruthie twice. It's not a, it's not a really obstructive route. I don't think it really closes off the, the city in a bad way. The run for downtown does it way more, and we do it every year. It's just one day, it's a couple of hours, and I just don't know why we need to reinvent the wheel on it when it's really just a couple hours once a year. I mean, I understand that the residents have their issues, but it's the same thing for Run for Downtown in that section of the city. The Classic is much longer, but we, we do it, because we know that it's good for what we're doing the event for. So I don't, I don't, I don't really feel, like, supportive of that. That's just my opinion.
Alderman Green.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, you know, for lack of a better term, beat a dead horse with this, but, you know, basically, this is just giving us the opportunity. This was put on the agenda. It says to authorize the closing of the roads. That's all we wanna discuss, is, you know, the, the road closures, the times that things are gonna start. As Alderman Kleiner said, the letter says, I believe, seven AM. The resolution says we're gonna start at eight AM. There's just certain things we wanna be able to bring to the constituents who have expressed concern after last year's race actually went very well, and we heard positive feedback on it from that route, that, you know, we do our due diligence and say, "Look, we, we took the time. We contacted the parties that we needed to contact. We certainly have reached out in years past, have not had great success speaking with past administrations at the YMCA. I understand there are new this year." So it would just be nice to not have had this, not, I'm not saying it was done secretly or anything, you know, it comes on the agenda. We saw it came on the agenda on Friday. We spoke, and we would just like to move this to the next meeting. We're not saying we're not gonna vote for it or anything. It has nothing to do with the families, or it's a great event. It's simply to be able to say to our constituents, "We did our due diligence," just like we would defer to any of you. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Just to clear it up, back in, when John started in two thousand, I think, eleven, we put a council...
put a calendar, it's in the clerk's office. The clerk knows that we have Night Out Against Crime, we have every, all these events and he's authorized by me to put it on the agenda every time, so we don't miss it. We were, we were putting resolutions after the fact. So now we, we're, every year, we have the calendar set for the whole year. If there's more events that are, are approved by the city, we put them on our, our calendar. And then I say, make sure you get these resolutions in and everybody can go in Rick's office and, and ask for a copy of the schedule. It's there. Roll.
An a motion by Mr. Kleiner, seconded by Mr. Green to postpone, correct?
Yes.
Alderman Tobin.
Until.
Next meeting.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Ram Cassoon.
No.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
No.
Massey.
No.
President Rodriguez.
No.
Motion does not carry.
Okay, so we have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any more discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, re, authorizing, declaring the city as lead agency in a seeker review with respect to a rezoning request.
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. A resolution sponsored by Alderman Green authorizing a public hearing changing the definition of retail business in the, uh, downtown, uh, DMU, excuse me.
A resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries.
Local laws.
Local law number three, law updating the notice of provisions in the enforcement of delinquent property taxes sponsored by Alderman Massey.
Do we have a second? Alderman Johnson? Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Audit. Mr. President, I move the accounts to be audited, the claims to be adjusted and the city treasurer be authorized to wish a warrant for their payment. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green. Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alderman Kleiner.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we go into executive session to discuss a contract.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now executive session.